I'd like to call to order this regular meeting of the Lincoln Lancaster County Planning Commission of April 25th, 2018. A printed agenda is available outside the hearing room and a copy of the full agenda, including the staff reports, is available at the front of the chambers with the clerk. The Open Meetings Act is posted just inside the doors at the back of the room. If you are parked in the parking garage across the street to the north, please be sure to pick up a parking coupon on your way out for free parking. And out of courtesy for those attending this meeting, the commissioners and the staff, cellular phone usage is not permitted in these chambers during any portion of this meeting. We will appreciate your cooperation. Please note that the Planning Commission action is final on the following agenda items: Item #1.1, Special Permit #13055B, and Item #1.2, Special Permit #16019A, and Item #4.1, Special Permit #18012.
Harris?
Yes.
Any aggrieved person may appeal final action of the Planning Commission to the City Council
Hove?
Abstain.
Joy?
Yes.
or County Board by filing a notice of appeal with the clerk within 14 days following the
Washington?
Abstain.
Cor?
Yes.
And Shear?
Yes. action of the Planning Commission.
Motion carried seven to zero.
The next item of business is the consent agenda. The Planning Commission action on all other items is a recommendation to the City Council Items on the consent agenda will be called at the same time and will not be scheduled for a separate public hearing unless there is a request for someone wishing to speak or County Board. The first item of business is the approval of the minutes of the special hearing held or at the request of a commission member. I'll ask Jerry to read all of the consent agenda items into the record. April 4th, 2018, and the minutes of the regular meeting, regular hearing, held April 11th, Once those items are read, she will ask if there's anyone wishing to speak. 2018. If you wish to speak on an item on the consent agenda, we would ask that you stand and state Is there a motion?
So move Joy?
Second Finnegan.
Are we approving them together?
that item, and then that item will then be removed from the consent agenda and scheduled
Yes.
Yes.
Can I abstain, still abstain on the special hearing?
as a separate public hearing under Section 3 of today's agenda.
Well, we can separate them.
You want to separate, so you can do that? All items remaining on the consent agenda will be voted upon in total with a motion
If you don't mind.
Yeah.
Do that, okay.
Thank you.
for approval.
So we'll call for the...
Separately. Jerry, will you please call the items on the consent agenda?
On April 4th?
So this is April 4th, vote.
Thank you. Item 1.1 is Special Permit #13055B to amend the special permit regarding alley paving
Yes.
It was moved by Joy, seconded by Finnegan. Ready for the vote?
Yep.
and parking requirements on property generally located at 1245 South Folsom Street. Okay, Beckius?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Item 1.2 is Special Permit 16019A to amend Special Permit 16019 to allow for a new asphalt Harris?
Abstain.
Hove?
Abstain.
Joy?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
plant on property generally located at North 84th Street and Fletcher Avenue. Cor?
Yes.
And Shear?
Yes.
Motion carried seven to zero. And I would note that for both special permit, 13055B and 16019A, this is final action by
And now we'll do April 11th.
Okay. I'll need a motion.
Pardon me?
I'm over approval.
Second Edgerton.
Okay.
Okay, Beckius?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan? the Planning Commission unless appealed to the City Council within 14 days. Item 1.3 is Use Permit 121A to expand the use permit by approximately 2.4 acres for a medical office with adjustments to setbacks, lighting design standards, and storm water detention for property generally located at 7545 Pioneer's Boulevard. Item 1.4 is Street and Alley Vacation 18001 to vacate approximately 2.2 acre, acres of the former Yankee Hill Road right-of-way generally located at South 84th Street and Yankee Hill Road. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on these items?
I have one. I had a conversation with Kathy LaBaron and Lisa Smith, who are supporters of the Willard Community Center. We didn't discuss the application in specifically, but we discussed the programming and the expansion.
Noted, thank you.
I see no others.
Is there anyone here wishing to speak on any of these consent agenda items? If so, please stand and state that item.
We will entertain a motion for the consent agenda then.
Move approval. Move approval, Hove?
Second Cor.
Ready for the vote?
I think we're ready for the vote.
Okay. Beckius?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
Yes.
Harris?
Yes.
Hove?
Yes.
Joy?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Motion carried nine to zero.
There are no requests for deferral, so we will now proceed to public hearings. The staff will make a brief presentation. The applicant will then be requested to present his or her testimony, followed by those who wish to testify in support, followed by those who wish to testify in opposition. The staff will then be given an opportunity to respond to the testimony, and then the applicant shall have an opportunity for rebuttal. Each person testifying should state their name and address and shall have five minutes to speak unless additional time is requested and granted. The timer will go off after four minutes, then you will have one minute to wrap up your testimony. The Planning Commission will vote immediately at the close of the public hearing unless the commission votes to defer action or continue the public hearing. Jerry, please call the first public hearing item.
Okay, Item 4.1 is Special Permit #18012 to allow for a wind energy conversion system tower to exceed the restricted height of 35 feet with setback reduction on property generally located at 1844 Washington Street. Staff recommendation is conditional approval. Again, this is final action on Special Permit 18012 unless appealed to the City Council within 14 days of today's hearing. Are there any ex parte communications to be disclosed on these, or this agenda item?
I see none. George?
Thank you, George Wesselhoff, Planning Department. So where we're at, this is the northwest corner of Washington Street and South 19th A closer site map helps illustrate the proposal is to have the wind turbine in the northwest part of the property. It would be attached to the back of the deck on the west side of the existing garage. So this is a side view schematic that shows the proposal. The overall height would be 52 feet from the grade to the top of the rotors. The height limit for the district is 35 feet, which is shown there. The height from the tower support base that's integrated with the proposed deck would be 41 feet. So I'll just go back to the site drawing. There is a waiver associated with this request, which is to seek a setback reduction from 52 feet to 41 feet. So the proposed setback is 41 feet to the west as well as to the north from the property Another facet related to this is the engineering. In the applicant's testimony or letter, he notes that the structure will be engineered so that the effective fall zone will be limited to that proposed 41-foot setback in the event that there's a structural failure. And that would be something that would be verified at the time of building permit. Another aspect that was reviewed by the Health Department was the concern about potential noise under the city's noise ordinance, and that's reflected in the condition of approval, which the applicant would have to demonstrate compliance with the noise ordinance before receiving a building permit. And I would just mention, this is actually the first special permit application of this kind that we're aware of. The reason that the special permit is needed, again, is because the proposal is to exceed the height limit of the district. Otherwise, in the zoning ordinance, there's two types of uses which pertain to wind turbines. There's a wind energy conversion system like this one. There's also a commercial wind energy conversion system, which would be more like an industrial or commercial wind turbine. A wind energy conversion system is permitted by right in all zoning districts. So if they would meet all the requirements, including height, it would just be permitting through Building and Safety. We did check with Building and Safety, just as FYI, to find out some other examples of wind turbines that have met the requirements, that were permitted through building permits. And there are several of them. One notable example might be on O Street at 2555 O Street, as well as 8411 Windmill Drive. These are the easy-go convenience stores. They have little wind turbines on top of their gas canopies. So with that, I can answer any questions.
Questions for George?
George, do you know how tall the house is there, so we can compare, kind of? I mean, I know it has to be within the 35 feet, but do we know, is it at the upper level of that?
That I do not know. The applicant might know the answer.
George, looking here on the analysis, Section 4B, it says the distance from any support tower base needs to be at least five rotor distances, figured by the size of the largest. So if we, so the, and we are well with, within five, right? Without a problem?
That reference under that Section B is in reference to another wind energy conversion system? There are no other such systems in the vicinity?
Sorry, from the nearest lot line. We're, we are well within five, correct?
Um...
I just want to make sure I'm reading it correctly.
No, what it's trying to say is that it's at least five away from the next wind turbine.
Right, but in theory, one could put one up in the adjoining lot. So I'm wanting to make sure that we're fine with, as I'm reading this, as I'm understanding it correctly, from where the base, the proposed base is located.
If, if you're asking if the, respective of the rotor diameter?
Yes.
It's six feet, so...
Right, so we're at 30, so we should be fine?
Correct.
From the nearest lot line?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand your question.
Yeah, sorry, and I wasn't real clear. So I wanted to make sure, okay. And then, that's, that's fine. Thank you, George.
You're welcome.
Other questions for George? Maybe later.
Thank you.
Some money from the applicant?
Morning. Clark DeVries at 1844 Washington Street. The applicant. I don't know if there's anything to add. George did a good job with that. There was a question about the height of the house. The house, to the peak of the house is 29 feet, but then there's a, there's a chimney that's at 32 feet. And then this garage itself, its peak is at 25 feet. So this would, this would be literally about twice as tall as the garage at the 52 feet. So a little background on this, I mean, my, my goal, I designed and built the house back in the 90s, and I added solar a few years ago, and solar panels, and I thought it'd be nice to have a little mix, just to sort of promote it. In my, I'm a mechanical engineer by trade, promoting renewable energy and the design thereof, but it, it's a challenge. It's cost-wise, it's, it doesn't make a lot of sense, but it's something that I can do and know how to do and have designed and, and like to implement. It's, and so like to move forward with it, if possible. Questions?
Is there any, tell me about the reason that it's the height that you've proposed?
Well, part of it is I have a pole at height, to a certain extent. So it was my ability to secure a nice structural tower that could be incorporated in the columns for the deck itself. And it might be a little shorter than that if, I mean, it's a rotor diameter is what dictates that a little bit, and the units that I'm looking at are between four and six-feet diameter blades, so it's not going to be very much, so I use the worst case. But it strictly is just the materials I had available.
Thank you.
Have you talked to your neighbors at all about the...
Yeah, a few of them I've had a call. It's Lady Catty Corner across Washington. She was supportive of renewable energy, but was concerned about visually what it would, what would it do? And it's so far in the back, in the middle of the block, so to speak, that I don't think people will notice it. The sound data is what I'm trying to get out of the manufacturers, and that's very difficult to do, but obviously I'll be meeting the requirements of health department's sound limitations, which is, I think, 55 dB. And the units I've looked at range from 38 to 45, and worst-case 50 is what I plan, so I think I'll meet those requirements. And other neighbors, I don't know, it's, there's some apartments next door I own, or my son and I have at least half the properties around us. I own the house next door, and he has the one catty corner across the alley. So he has, he has indicated that he will complain if it makes too much noise, so. But, any other questions?
I drove by to look at this, and I want to make sure, your garage is the newer structure on the south side. Can you...
South side of, of your, your property? No, it would be, where the house is on the corner of 19th and Washington.
Okay, and then if you go down...
North of the house is the garage.
I'm sorry, north of the house.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, north of the house, okay.
Yes, it matches the house, it's, it's, yep.
And where, in conjunction with your garage, will this be built?
The west side.
The west side.
West side, so basically the opposite, where you drive in, it'd be the back side of the garage.
And you have two solar panels back there.
Yeah, did you notice those?
Oh, yeah, I did.
I mean, a lot of people, they, they don't spot them right away, but yeah, they're, they're in the side yard. And yeah, those are, it's a 7.2 KW system, so it's pretty good size.
Thank you.
How much power will this provide?
Oh, well, it's between a 400 and 600 watt generator. And so, you know, when it's, when it's at 30-some mile-per-hour winds, it'll be generating 600 watts per hour, you know, so that's...
So that'll support what in your house?
About four light bulbs, I don't... What it'll do is it'll charge a battery bank, and then, and so from that battery bank, inverter, you know, it's, so it's, you know, it, it just adds power to that part of my system. But it's 600 watts. It, it's just it, you know, at night, when it's winds blowing, sun's not out, so it's making a little power.
I had one question about the decibels.
Yes.
What was, at what wind speed were the decibels measured? You just mentioned 30 miles an hour, and I'm curious.
Yeah, you know, that's the, that's the, when I'm having problems with manufacturing data, the specifications, they all vary. It's at rated, it's at the rated wind speed, which is around the 30-some miles per hour. And then anything, as it gets over that, then they break it, they stop, you know, they slow it down, they, they stop it from spinning as fast. So, and then what distance that's measured at, I, you know, that, the 40, the worst-case one I think I saw was 48 dB, and that just mean right at, you know, right at the wind turbine. Well, you're 52 feet away if you're on the ground, so distance, you know, is part of it. But there's, there's no standard. And these smaller units, they just don't have the data. So I'm up against that a little bit.
Is that, is that sound data that you're talking about from the manufacturer, is that what the Health Department, and we can ask the Health Department, is that, is that what the Health Department's looking for in terms of compliance?
Yes.
Okay.
I think so.
Okay.
And I, obviously, I'm aware, if, if, after I have this up and there's an complaint, and it measures more than 55 dB at the property line, I have a problem.
Yeah.
And I have to remedy, so.
Okay.
That would be something I'd, you know, have to issue, have to deal with.
Yep.
Another odd question for you, but have you had any vandalism with your solar panels?
Oh, no, no, other than the birds, no.
And you're not expecting anyone to...
No, I have a nice privacy fence around the place and haven't, haven't had any, haven't had any problems.
Other questions? Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Do we have testimony in support of this application? Do we have testimony in opposition of this application? Please come forward.
My name is Diane Coza, and I'm a little nervous. I live at 2065 Indigo Court, and my husband and I own the property at 1832 Washington, which is right next door to 1844 Washington. We have not been approached to, to ask about this. When we purchased the four-plex at 1832 Washington, we did so with the intent to provide good, clean, safe, affordable, and comfortable housing for our tenants in this high-density neighborhood. Our tenants are good people. They work hard to support their families and often live paycheck to paycheck. Many cannot afford to live in a different area at this time of their lives. It is our belief that adding a turbine to our neighbor's property, which already has an incredibly oversized solar panel, can cause an adverse effect to our tenants and the neighborhood's quality of life. The property at 1844 Washington already resembles a commercial alternative energy facility, and adding a turbine will make it look even more commercial. This neighborhood has many apartments and houses that have been turned into duplexes. However, it still maintains the look and feel of a neighborhood. We would like to not see that aesthetic changed. According to the National Academy of Science, it is recommended that a 2,600-foot setback about a half a mile from the nearest home should be in place to prevent a wind turbine from having a negative impact on the neighborhood. This proposal is nowhere near that setback. We also are concerned with noise levels and other health issues that can be caused to our tenants and others within the neighborhood. According to the College of Family Physicians of Canada, in a report titled "Adverse Health Effects of Industrial Wind Turbines," people who live or work in close proximity to wind turbines have experienced symptoms that include decreased quality of life, annoyance, stress, sleep disturbance, headache, anxiety, depression, and cognitive dysfunction. Some have also felt anger, grief, or a sense of injustice. Suggested causes of symptoms include a combined of wind turbine noise, infrasound, dirty electricity, ground current, and shadow flicker. Finally, physicians should be aware that patients reporting adverse effects from wind turbines might experience symptoms that are intense and pervasive and might feel further victimized by the lack of caregiver understanding. The noise is described as piercing, preoccupying, and continually surprising as it is irregular in intensity. The noise includes grating and incongruent sounds that distract the attention or disturb rest. The spontaneous recurrence of these noises disturbs the sleep, suddenly awaking the subject when the wind rises and preventing the subject from going back to sleep. Wind turbines have been blamed for other problems experienced by people living nearby. These are less precise and less well-described, and consist of subjective headaches, fatigue, temporary feelings of dizziness, nausea, and sometimes objective manifestations of vomiting, insomnia, and palpitations. I do understand that the approval of the building permit would be based on a noise study to determine if the noise levels would comply with the city noise ordinance. I also know that a study in statistics can be made to say anything you want them to say. What is going to happen if the building permit is granted and then later the people in this neighborhood suffer, suffer from turbine noise, infrasound, dirty electricity, ground current, and shadow flicker? What resources would these people have then? Other questions I have is where else in Lincoln, Nebraska is there a wind type in this type of, or any type of neighborhood? I know this is the first application, okay? Then where in the United States is there a wind turbine of this type located in any type of neighborhood? How about a densely populated area such as what is being proposed? Are there any? And if not, why not? If there are, what type of issues have they encountered? How has it been received by the residents who live next door? Has this type of research even been conducted? If the answer to these questions is that the research has not been completed, I'd like to know why. Our tenants deserve to be treated better than to be an experiment. As a member of the city government, it is your role to watch out for all Lincolnites, including those who reside in this neighborhood. If you approve this request, are you looking out for those who live in this neighborhood? You must ask yourself, would you want your neighbor to have one of these in their backyard? Again, we respectfully request that this proposal be denied and that the best interest of the neighborhood and the tenants who live there be placed above the desire to run an alternative energy experiment by erecting a wind turbine in this densely populated area. Thank you for your time.
Questions?
On the studies that you referenced, did they mention how large the turbines were?
I'm sure that some of the information was with the larger commercial turbines, and I took that into consideration because I could not find anything on, on the smaller ones. However, even if you cut that 2,600-foot setback in half, or a third, or a quarter, it's still not within the setback that, that is being proposed. Thank you.
Other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there testimony in opposition? Do we have any staff questions?
Yes.
Yes, we have staff questions.
So if this had been 35 foot, it would have been allowed by right. Is that right?
Correct.
And the only reason the setback waiver is needed is because it's, it's supposed to be the, the full height of the, of wind conversion system or the turbine?
Correct. It's supposed to be 52 feet, but they're requesting the reduction, and they will have to provide engineering documentation that the effective fall zone will equal the 41.
What, what's the intent of the, the setback in the, in the ordinance as it stands? It's just to ensure that it will fall within the, the lot, or, or is it, does it have anything to do with noise?
I think generally speaking that there's other ordinances like that for cell towers or for wind turbines where the intent is to, for it to fall on the property in question and not fall on a neighbor's property.
So it's only related to the fall zone, not to the decibels that will be generated by the turbine?
As far as I know, yes. I'm, wasn't here when that was crafted, but that's my understanding.
And is it, is it your opinion that it has nothing to do with the aesthetic, the visual, or, and that does not factor into the setback? Or do you think that that was...
So, um, if this had been thirty-five foot, it would have been allowed by right. Is that right?
Correct.
And the only reason the setback waiver is needed is because it, it's, it's supposed to be the, the full height of the, of wind conversion system or the turbine?
Correct, it's supposed to be fifty-two feet, but they're requesting the reduction, and they will have to provide engineering documentation that the effective fall zone will equal the forty-one.
What, what's the intent of the, the setback in the, in the ordinance as it stands? It's just to ensure that it will fall within the, the, um, lot? Or, or is it, does it have anything to do with noise?
Um, I think generally speaking that there's other ordinances like that for cell towers or for wind turbines where the intent is to, for it to fall on the property in question and not fall on a neighbor's property.
So it's only related to the fall zone, not to the decibels that will be generated by the turbine?
As far as I know, yes. I'm, wasn't here when that was crafted, but that's my understanding.
And is it, is it your opinion that it has nothing to do with the aesthetic, um, of the visual, or, uh, and that does not factor into the setback? Or, um, or do you think that that was, was that the intent, intent of the ordinance as well?
I don't know whether aesthetics is, was factored in. I think the primary reason, again, is just to keep the structure on the premises in question if it collapses.
And, and you're confident that it will fall within the, a safe fall zone in this particular case?
The applicant will have to demonstrate that in order to get a building permit with engineering documentation.
Okay, thank you.
Um, I have a follow-up question to one of those. If I'm remembering right, I can't remember if it was WEX or if it was, um, a cellphone tower, but usually when these things, if they would fall, they fall kind of on themselves? Am I thinking of the right? And that might be a question I have to ask the applicant.
I, I think that's what the applicant in his letter indicates, that it, it would collapse at that forty, forty-one foot level.
Which is its place on the deck?
Yes.
There's eleven feet that is the support for the deck as well as the turbine, and then, so the deck is fairly high off the ground, and then you have forty-one foot clear of deck.
Correct, it's integrated with the deck structure.
Okay. So even if it fell the whole fifty-two feet, we're only talking about twenty-six feet, which is far short of what the setback is.
I'm sorry, I didn't follow the...
So if it fall, if it's standing and it falls on itself, the whole length is fifty-two, so if it just falls in half, that's gonna be like twenty-six feet, and our setback is more than that.
It's on top of the roof, so.
No, I think it, it will actually, if the whole thing falls from the ground, it's fifty-two feet, and the deck comes down.
They're saying, oh, okay. My understanding is that usually they fall on themselves, so they would not fall completely down, they would just fall in half, so you wouldn't need the whole fifty-two feet.
But it's being engineered to snap at forty-one feet.
Yes, and the applicant can maybe expand on that.
Okay, perhaps.
How's the decibel level measured? Is it a constant decibel level, or is it?
I, I can speak, Chris Schroeder, Health Department. So the, the relative noise, noise limits in our noise ordinance, um, it's, so from seven, seven AM to ten PM, it's sixty-five decibels for a ten-minute LEQ, or ten-minute noise average. And that's taken at the complainant's property line, if we get a noise complaint. Then from ten PM to seven AM, that drops to the fifty-five decibels.
Okay, so obviously this would have to have fifty, it'd be under fifty-five decibels.
Right, fifty-five or less to be in compliance.
For nighttime regulation, what, for layman, tell, tell me what else is at fifty-five decibels? What, what's in that range of what I might experience in everyday life?
Oh, a, a good example of fifty-five decibels might be, you know, soft conversation.
Okay.
How loud is a lawnmower?
Oh geez, taking the property line, sixty, seventy decibels, again, it depends on the distance, but louder for sure.
Is there a shadow flicker from these smaller turbines?
I can't answer that, I don't know.
Do you know if they make the, the thumping noise that the, the larger ones?
Not sure, that'd probably be a question of, of the manufacturer.
Yeah.
And, but you think the manufacturer's data that will be provided will be enough information for you to be able to make a judgment on?
I mean, it's probably, it's gonna be the best information that we have to, to review it. I mean, if they come back and say it's forty-five decibels measured at the turbine, then that should be in compliance with the noise code. You know, with that said, if we do get a complaint, we'll send staff out and actually take a reading.
You'll measure it.
Right, and if we find a violation, then the owner, applicant, needs to take corrective action to bring it to compliance.
Gotcha. Any other questions? Oh.
And, and the noise ordinance that's relevant here is no different than the noise ordinance that's on the property today.
Correct.
So it's no change whatsoever. Thank you.
I have one quick question. The power poles that are adjacent to the property, what is the standard height of the power poles?
I don't know that I know that answer.
Because that's really close to visually when you went by it, yeah. And do we have any health issues with power poles or any noise from that that you're aware of?
I'm not aware of any.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay, I think we're good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, applicant rebuttal. Clark? If you want.
Sure.
I'm sure these guys will want you to.
We haven't met, but, uh, yeah, but under, uh, did it try to call me?
No, I haven't.
I, I had a few calls. My wife's out of town and, uh, and message, message machine wasn't, I was, I was backlog by that, but I think I got to everybody that called me. Small wind turbines like this, uh, don't, um, don't have the same physical, obviously, characteristics as the large ones. And I've, I've studied, or I've followed large wind turbines and, and then the, the opposition to them, and, uh, it's just, it's, it's people's opinions. And, um, they have a lot of them in Iowa. I know a lot of people in Iowa that live on acreages near them, and, uh, that those negative results don't appear there, but that's neither here nor there. This is a, a small micro wind turbine that the, uh, the shadow, the flicker thing is, is proportional to the diameter of the, of the swept area, and when that sun shines through that swept area, that shadow, people can see that flicker. This is so small, I'm not sure where that would be at any one time of the day, and it'd only be, um, you know, it'd be something that would be there, I suppose, but it's spinning at a, quite a bit higher RPM than, than those massive wind turbines. So I don't know that it'd be much of a flicker, as much of just, um, yeah, because of the, the, the speed at which the blades are going. Noise-wise, yeah, that's, that's gonna be a concern. So I guess, uh, I'll wait to see what that data is. I, I guess I have a question, if, would that noise, um, you know, if I stayed at the thirty-five feet, it's still, the noise issue would still be there, because it's whether you're doing your lawnmower or whether you're doing your wind turbine. So, um, I realize that's, uh, uh, something to deal with. The, uh, traffic noise from A Street is so much louder, but at night, you know, that slows down, so it could be that there could be a problem with it. But again, I, I do pledge that I'm gonna, I would do something about it, even if it meant take it down, taking the turbine out and just putting a flag up. So I'm okay with, with giving it a try and seeing, seeing what is accomplished.
So why not a thirty-five foot one instead of a fifty-two?
It's just, uh, the laminar flow over buildings, you have to be a certain percentage above that building to get out of that turbulent area. And with the, my house being right at thirty, uh, well, it's right at twenty-nine, thirty feet, the, uh, to get more wind production, you gotta be higher. And again, you know, I could have went for, uh, forty-two feet, or I could have went, it's, it's because I had this pole that was long enough to do a fifty-two foot to the top of the rotor. It just helps get above the trees and get above obstructions. It, you know, gets it further from the ground, so maybe noise is less of a problem. So if I do it at thirty-five feet, the noise will be closer to the ground and could be, you know, worse. It might not exceed that fifty-five, but it'll, it'll, it'll definitely be louder the closer it is to the ground, for people on the ground, but.
Are you aware of any place, any densely populated area that has wind turbines like?
Like this? Um, yeah, I mean, there was one over on, uh, North Forty-Eighth Street, a little house by Tabitha, and it was on a telephone, or a television antenna pole, you know, forty, forty-two foot, and it just sat there and spun, and, uh, they don't, they're just, they are very quiet comparatively, you know, speaking to the, the big ones, but, um, that's, that was there for years. I, I mean, it got torn down and made into a parking lot, but there's that one, and then there's, uh, the ones on those gas stations are a little different, those are horizontal axis, uh, style. I mean, it's a, just a totally different style. And then, um, other than that, no, it's just what I, if you go on the web and you research them, they're, um, they're out there, they're just, you know, not a lot of them in town, obviously, we know of, but.
If you had to compare what you're planning on building to the size of some of these big, commercial-sized ones, would you say it's like a tenth of the size, a half of the size, or?
Well, some of those big ones are three-hundred-foot diameter.
Three-hundred something.
And this is gonna be four to six, so, uh, it, this, yeah, it's, you couldn't scale the information for sure, you could not scale the data.
Are you familiar with the, um, small one out on the Southeast Community College campus on eighty-eighth and O?
No, I'm not. They have a little one there, do they?
I was wondering if you'd...
I, you know, I've been around, um, we're, I stopped on a rural one, but it was a big ten KW unit, which had about a twelve-foot diameter rotor, so big. And, uh, it was a windy day, windy day, and I stopped there, and it was, you could hear it, you knew it was there when you walked under it, for sure. So, but again, that's so much bigger. So I guess, you know, I'll, we'll have to hang our hat on the data from the manufacturer, and then the ultimate thing will be measured at the property line. Any other questions?
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
I think we're ready to entertain a motion.
Vote approval.
Second.
Discussion?
I would, um, I would say that, um, since a thirty-five-foot turbine is allowed by right, and, um, I think I heard all zoning districts, um, that has to guide my decision. Um, if, if it's allowed by right, that means to me that we've taken as a community a decision that, that this is an appropriate use and it's an acceptable use. Uh, I asked about the intent of the ordinance as it relates to the setback, to understand if that is coming from, mainly from an aesthetic or from a safety perspective. From what I understand, it's a safety perspective, and then when I hear that we can meet that safety guideline, um, that information paired with the fact that the complaint tells us to encourage, uh, alternative, um, um, energy sources, um, I think this is, uh, this is appropriate and worth a try.
I agree, I, um, seconded the motion because I believe that this is, we're moving in the right direction with sustainable energy use. It doesn't seem like this project is going to take away from, um, the character of the neighborhood beyond what our ordinances have already allowed for, and as long as he needs to meet, uh, building code for the fall, um, and, uh, we have some assurances of the sound impacts, um, and I am comforted by the fact that he understands his responsibility should the sound be higher than what the manufacturer has said, that he will take measures to correct that or take the structure down.
Others?
And I'll just add, um, the, I will support the motion. The, the, the sound issue was, was my only, um, uh, issue to contend with, but keep in mind, we're, we're, we're not exceeding any sound, uh, that is, uh, we're, we're not allowing any exceptions for any additional sound other than what's already allowed today. So I, I don't think the point's particularly relevant.
I'm struggling with this, but I, I'm leaning to, toward voting no. The neighborhood is a very densely populated neighborhood. I drove by, made several laps around trying to envision this, and, um, thirty-five feet was designated for a reason, fifty-two feet in a, not in a rural area or a big area, um, seems a bit over the top to me, so I most likely will vote no on this.
I'm also gonna vote no. I, uh, aesthetically, I think Dean's right, it's fifty, thirty-five feet for a reason. And, uh, the other thing is, is I'm, I'm not, um, the D, decibel thing, to me, if, if, if it's a thumping noise, it's kind of like a, a dripping, dripping water, and that keeps people awake, and so I, I guess, uh, it might be underneath the dB level, but it's, it's still a constant all the time, and, and that's, I think, what would be bothersome.
I think there's good arguments on both side, sides of this. Um, I'm gonna support it, I'm gonna support the motion. I, I think there's enough, I don't know if controls is the right word, but, um, there's certainly enough steps here to make sure that this thing will be a success, and if it's not a success, there's certainly enough steps that it will be removed. I think the other thing that's persuaded me to, to vote for it is that I, uh, after our long discussion, whenever that was, a year and a half ago, on the big turbines, uh, this one does seem different to me. It's, uh, just the way it spins, I think there's some differences here that are, that are more appropriate for a neighborhood like this, so all things considered, I'm gonna, I'm gonna vote for the motion. Please call the vote.
Okay, this is for conditional approval of special permit one eight zero one two. Beckyus?
Yes.
Edgerton?
Yes.
Finnegan?
No.
Harris?
Yes.
Hove?
No.
Joy?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Cor?
Yes.
Shear?
Yes.
Motion carried, seven to two.
At this time, uh, anyone wishing to speak on an item not on the agenda may do so. I see none, so we are adjourned.